It is six o'clock. We will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Please call the attendance.
Mr. Hupkey. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March?
Here.
Mr. Ham?
Here.
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mr. Pack?
Here.
A full of the minutes of the 5/23/2016 committee of the whole meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Not a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Ham, settled by Trustee Bowden.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. March?
President.
Mr. Pack?
President.
Mr. Jones?
President.
President Cross?
Yes. That's what happens when you ask. All right. Public comment. No public comment. General discussion.
I just have one thing. I met with the real estate agent for presence on their building over there. If you recall, we were trying to get in there to take a look and see what they actually, what the building was like, A and B. They were having some right-of-way discussions with them as far as what they're going to do there and what's going to be left with the stoplight if, now that we know if the government proceeds with everything. So I was in there today and it's not in too bad a shape. There's quite a bit of furniture and stuff in there still. Be a great doctor's office. I mean, that's what it was, but I don't know what else you could do with it. I really don't. I mean, you'd essentially have to gut it and start over, no matter what you did, unless it was a doctor that could. It's all set up, you know, contamination from things like that. But it's clean. They have a guy going in once a week cleaning and keeping it up, so I can't say we can complain about that. There's no evidence of weeds or anything growing up around it. They would like to sell it to the village, but I told them that's, I don't see that happening. So I didn't mean to speak out of turn, but I just don't see that happening unless the price is so low that, you know, it's.
What's it listed at now?
They want 300. And I said, "Well, you start high, I start low," and I handed them a $50 bill. I said, "I'll cover it." But there's no way it's worth that, by the way. Maybe the state of Illinois gave that kind of value to take the, with the taking of the, you know, parking lot. But I hit maybe 100, maybe 100 and a half, maybe.
So is their parking lot going to be gone on the?
Half of it, yeah.
The Corning roadside?
The Corning roadside.
Yeah, that's all going to be gone.
That's all going to be gone.
And he had a good point. If you took the, if somebody took the drive-through, the overhang down, you probably can create some spots, you know, around that way.
Sure.
But it's tight. I mean, that's a, that.
That is tight.
I, if you, when you're looking at it by eyeball, it's still tight. I mean, you know, so.
Are they closing the, was there an entrance on Corning?
Yes.
Yes.
Are they getting, is that going to be?
That'll probably be closed.
I would assume that's going to be closed.
So their only entrance is going to be off of 50 there.
And they share that with Edward R. Jones?
Yeah.
They don't have any interest in that property, by the way. I thought they did, but they don't own any of that, so.
Drollies, I think.
Oh, drollies, okay, okay. So, again, not a bad building, but I'm not an expert. I mean, inside, at least they're keeping it clean, so we don't have to worry about that rodent infestation and things like that. I, he's going to throw us, he's going to, he's going to talk to the Good Sisters and get a price and let us know. That's where we kind of left it, so.
Could the building be moved?
Can the building be moved? I'm not real sure about that. I'm not good at, I don't know. It's on a slab, so I would imagine, I don't know, can you? You know, I'm not, never moved a building, so I don't know.
Now, were they aware that, you know, that, you know, Dr. Lowery's office closed? I mean, I wonder if that would make a difference to them. There's kind of an opening for physician town, basically, you know?
Well, I asked him about physicians and they, he said they have no, absolutely no interest in rehabitating it.
Okay.
And don't forget why, and it may not be common knowledge, but I think they have some financial pressures on their buildings that they have opened now. So, you know, and the K Key building is less than half full at all times, so I think they've got some, they've got some issues. So. But they did hire Cushman at Wakefield, so he works with them, so at least they're a good, you know, commercial real estate company. They may be able to find something. I told them the village would work with them on parking and if they found something, somebody and things like that, but.
Are they open to leasing it or they just want to sell it off right?
I didn't ask him that question. I was looking at more of a sales situation, so if he calls me back, I can always answer.
I mean, if somebody wanted to lease it from that center.
I would imagine they would. I mean, what are they going to do with it otherwise? And there's, they're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place on that building. It's just going to sit there and burn. It's not a good retail space, you know, so you're not going to get these hardware or anybody want to get through and say, "Yeah, we want," you know.
What's the net effect on us as far as our roadway stop, stoplight and all that stuff?
Well, we, the, the, the state will just take and they'll give them whatever they get. And that, you know, it may delay it as far as a little bit of time, but I don't think it'll delay it to the detriment of the project. I mean, they really have, first of all, those parking lots, those parking spaces are real. So we can take them out any. So they've had the, you know, the luck over all the years and that happened to be, as determined by the right-of-way people. But at least there's conversation. Now it's further ahead than before.
Are the other three corners perched here?
Yeah, I think Speedway is, they're just finalizing.
Yeah, they're just kind of wrapping things up on, on those.
The drollies.
The last, the last I heard, yeah.
Wrapping up. So, yeah, I think, I think all the way around it's okay, except for the other two. But state came out and said this week after Friday they're not funding anything, so all work stops. All work stops this weekend. If it does not already funded by the feds or, and I wonder if they're going to allow that $6 change to continue. I hadn't heard, so, yeah. So, yeah, all work stops. Then we got notified, I think I sent you a copy, I'm sure I sent you a copy of that letter. W, the Will County Governmental League wants to change the designation of that route from an FAU route to just a rural. Where we put the stoplight.
Oh, okay.
And so I fired off a letter and I couldn't get, you weren't into signature, so I just sent it via email and it stays. We're supposed to get you to sign. You can come tomorrow and we'll get you to sign.
I'll do it today.
Okay, if I find it, I got to find a layout offer.
Rural what?
For rural cross-section.
Rural cross?
So then.
You're talking all of Corning?
Yeah.
So what's it do with the other grants that we applied for for Corning?
So, and I don't understand why Will County Governmental League wants to do that. So we fired, we fired off letters. We sent letters to I.D.O.T. and, on Troy's advice too. Troy helped me write the letter, so he knew exactly what the wording should be.
I'm not following.
They want to take it from full access.
Now, where are we talking?
At the stoplight, Corning.
Corning or Route 50?
Corning. Not 50 won't change.
And they want to, and they want to call it what now?
A rural.
As opposed to?
As opposed to a FAU route.
What's FAU?
The whole, but full access route.
How can they take a village street?
I don't know. I don't know.
See, we were trying to, the process had been done. We did that with, well, not one, Wrath G. Road, so we could get all that funding to do that and so that we can finish. And then, because it has to be a street that goes all the way through the town. And I know the process was being done to have Corning that way too, so we could apply for funding to get Corning done like we did for Wrath G. And that was in the works for quite a few years.
Well, it's something to check with Troy with when he comes in. We've got more of the knowledge on that. But I wanted to make sure we got a letter out right of way, objecting to that.
And how does that affect us?
With stopping the project, Cole.
Really?
And the funding with people. And I don't, I don't understand Will County Governmental League on that, their, their transportation. I don't get it. I don't, I don't know what we've done to make them mad. We haven't done anything actually to make them mad or that they make this change. You know, sometimes these guys get in these little lively towers and they start making decisions that they don't realize, you know? So that's why we fired off a couple of letters. Strangely objected to that happening and hopefully that happens in that worst-case scenario, we may have to jump in the car and go over there and talk.
How would you that sooner than later?
Yeah, well, I wanted to get a letter and it came right away. And we emailed it and I, we just signed it for you. I knew you would, so, sorry.
That's okay. Today was all?
Well, this was actually last week, so like I said, Stacey.
It's due until next year.
Yeah, yeah. I left it for you to sign. And then she was going to mail. But then it already got me, they have it, so. So I got, wish I had better.
Did the electronic pickup, electronic recycling pickup get scheduled?
It got, it went through the county board from my understanding, but they haven't set the dates yet.
Okay. But it's, okay, I see.
Yes.
So it'll be a regular schedule, like second or?
Twice a month, I believe is what they had signed.
Year round?
I don't know.
Do they provide the workers?
Yes.
Yeah, originally when they planned it, I think they were going to ask the villages to supply workers. They did not do that. They decided to supply their own.
What's the status with the grass cutting, like in Ashburton, their retention economy is, it's looking pretty ragged.
Is it longer yet? Because they were cutting it.
They were cutting it. And your, our ordinance is 10 inches, so that can get pretty lengthy.
Yeah, I guess it's probably not 10 inches, actually.
And that means you have to look at that for next year.
I didn't know, the neighbor stopped, Mike and I, when we were walking down the street. It was complaining, you know, the village used to mow it, you know, they'd probably mow it once a week and it looked really nice out there.
Right.
You know, now it kind of looks like a field, like it is.
Right.
She wasn't happy about it, but, you know, what do you, it's not our property.
Correct. And as Greg said, I mean, if that's, if we want to look at that length, you know, change it by ordinance, eight inches or seven inches isn't going to look any better than 10 inches.
Did we hear anything else about the straw bale garden?
I haven't heard anything weird from them.
I did call them the last night, talked to Frank for them. Neither one of them allowed it. So we'll look out for next year, but we don't, we.
Heard anything after the last. He was going to be back with the mayor and he never did.
And this is something we talked about in closed session at the last meeting, so if we want to talk about it, I think that's where we need to talk about it. And.
What was it about?
The straw bale garden.
The straw bales.
That's just, I said, if we want to talk about it.
Was that closed? It was in the minutes.
I think it was, not recently.
No, we, at our last meeting, we had a closed session.
And the, you made a whole minutes, you made, was there, did we have talked about?
Okay.
We had talked about it at that meeting, but at the last village board meeting.
Okay.
We talked in closed session and I can, you can fill you in or. Anything else?
I wasn't here for the last meeting. I don't know if we discussed in Public Works about the Welcome to Piattone signs?
Yes.
And then I was talking to Kevin and as I hung up on you, Steve Maltese returned my call. So we got together and he is putting together a plan.
Okay, some specs.
Specs, costs, the whole nine yards. So we're just waiting to hear back from you.
I did call Troy about that too. I asked him what kind of timeline the state needs.
For the permits?
Yeah, and he said usually it's within a month, four to six weeks. So we should have it back, so he said that showed all the support all the time.
Yeah, I would like to see that done this year.
We need to make our contacts with Jim Bolton, FS. Well, another thing that came up when we were out measuring, looking at sidewalks, I don't know who it was over there in the mill trace, but they had a concern that, you know, we put the limbs out on the, don't put them on the street, but.
On parkway.
Well, there's no parkway there. Just the sidewalks are on the street virtually.
Well, those are our own curbs, well.
People have been stacking big quantities, so they can't walk down the sidewalk. And I wondered how, we need to address it, I suppose, because there would be big sections and high mounds of stuff.
I mean, is there any way we can just clarify or put out, you know, that subdivision? That, I mean, the Public Works wants it on the grass, I would assume, not on the sidewalk.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And so somehow, I mean, you know, maybe we can make, you know, an announcement to that effect or, you know, have the code guy, you know, just make a visit to people.
That would probably be the most, that would probably be the most effective way of, you know.
Yeah, and just saying, hey, you know, we know you've always done it this way, but, you know, we need to keep the sidewalk open. Because it is, it is annoying. You can't.
We shouldn't have it.
Mill trace. It's where the sidewalks are but the street. So around Connsbraker, Amsterdam.
Corning too.
Mill Corning. And what's that other?
Mill.
Mill.
That ends at the high school or Jupiter High.
And then the new Mill Trace or the newer one, I don't, what street is that?
Oh, Delft Court.
Delft, yeah. And Greg, I know, I think Mike had given you a list of like trees and stuff we saw hanging over sidewalks. Has that been a trust, you know?
Yeah, we're, actually, I told Cole to go out and talk to the people. They have to do it now. Even though, when I talked to Bob about it, even though the trees are in the parkway, in most cases, a lot of cases, it's still our responsibility to keep them trimmed. There's just no definition of height, minimum height.
I think there is.
I believe there is.
Eight, seven or eight?
Seven. Seven, seven feet over the sidewalk.
Seven foot on the streets, something like, 13 on the street.
13 on the street, seven on the sidewalk.
But there, that's not the only place that there's a problem. Do you notice? I mean, there are a lot of places.
Oh, yeah, that's why, so we were walking around, we're just trying to give them a list of addresses. We want to try to make Piattone sidewalk friendly, you know, walking friendly or.
Sure.
But, you know, either going to trip on a crack or there's going to be a little sidewalk or you get hit in the head with a tree branch. You're walking along, so.
But the cars that park over the top of the sidewalks, that's just as much.
No, that's, that's a traffic violation, I think, isn't it?
That's a.
I believe that's in the traffic code.
That should be enforced too. I mean, I, I mean, one perfect example is right on the corner of Garfield and West Street. I think it's Becker.
First House, Manhattan.
You know, he's got, he's got a pickup truck that just doesn't fit in his driveway and it just hangs up. The ball for his, you know, just hangs right out in the sidewalk. I mean, he can't pull it any farther forward unless he puts it in his garage, but, you know.
But then when the sidewalk stops.
The driveway goes down, so if you have a stroller or something, you're going downhill. It's not a good situation. But, yeah, I mean, that's all over town. People just leave their cars in the parkway. So, I mean, I don't know, what's the best way? I mean, if we see something like that, just to let you know or?
Yeah, because I got to get Bob out there.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a police situation?
On the sidewalk parking is a police issue. That's a.
So if it extends over the sidewalk, that's police?
Right.
Now, what about if they pull over the curb up onto the parkway?
That would be a police issue.
That's a police issue.
That's police also, I guess.
Because they're the only ones that can issue traffic to cause, or that kind of a behavior.
I mean, so where people like put gravel in their parkway so they can pull their car up there?
They can't, they can't, they can't go past the curb line.
Yeah.
Even if there's no curb line, whatever it is, management area or otherwise, they can't go past the curb line. If, if the ordinance, and I am not real familiar with this ordinance, but if the ordinance states that they can't park in parkway, they can't park in park.
Yeah.
One wheel, two wheels, the other way. The hanging over the driveway, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying maybe we should put a list of these type of things together and then write an article, at least to get it in the paper. You know, get it out onto our village Facebook page.
Yeah.
You know, website, you know.
I mean, that's a, that's a good start and, but I think, you know, we got to.
But no, we need some.
Put pressure on.
Right.
The code enforcement and then also, you know, if he sees something or the police sees something, they need to, you know, I hate to say it. I mean, but I mean, maybe issue a warning ticket.
I was going to say, at least a friendly, a friendly reminder at the first time.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't want anybody to get a ticket.
Right.
Still, we need to.
The police and code enforcement should work together to point out, I guess, what they see.
Correct. Any other thoughts, discussion?
I didn't hear how the Kids Fest.
That went well. It went well. We had a good turnout, good turnout for vendors, you know, good turnout.
Good.
From the public and, you know, people from other communities too.
Good.
You know, weather was perfect, a little hot.
Yeah.
You know, really, really good, so it was, it was a good day and it was really, you know, kind of neat to see. We really did, we had kids of all abilities there.
Right.
It was, it was fun just to, to watch them have fun and be entertained.
We have a new eye doctor in town. The other fellow sold out to Illinois Eye Associates.
Okay.
They've got a facility in Manhattan. They've been over there for a while and they took over this practice.
They have one in Mokina too, don't they? I believe so. I believe that one's in Manhattan, if it's the same one I'm thinking of. They have one in Mokina too. It doesn't matter.
I don't, I don't think this one does.
That business license will be, or business registration will be coming up on the next agenda. Please fill that as paper.
He's a real sharp guy, real aggressive.
Is he going to be the more hours than the other guy?
Yes. And his wife is also an accountant, she's a.
If that's the gentleman that had come in and talked some months ago, he was asking about some kind of handicap, being able to do something handicap to get the seniors in there. Is that the same gentleman?
Good.
So a few meetings ago, we talked about the sidewalk, like in front of Tongren's office that had just been put in last year. Did that, did we ever talk to the contractor about those issues?
Bob was going to talk to him, I'm not sure. I never heard anything from him, so I'll talk to Bob.
Follow-up on that?
Yeah, I know Bob was, had put a phone call in. I'm not sure where he, he don't go.
Speaking of Bob, has he finished his Arborist course or?
Yeah, he just took the test.
Yeah, took the test last week, so he won't know for a few weeks, though.
Oh, when he passed?
Yeah. He said it was tough.
Yeah?
It was tough. He's done, done with the class.
Because I, I think we had talked to him about, you know, maybe coming here and letting us know. I'd like to hear what he, kind of some of what he learned and, so maybe can you, maybe have him come the next committee of the whole?
Next committee of the whole, we will do that, we'll ask.
Just a little presentation then?
It's a good idea.
Because I'd like to get, moving forward on getting that Tree City designation done. So I'd like to hear what he thinks, you know, what could be done.
Yeah. Anything else?
So the sidewalk grant that we applied for, so is that all paperwork? That's all been submitted for that?
Troy.
Yes, that was all in.
And when, they make a decision on that or?
I'll have to ask Troy. I don't remember the exact date.
Is that affected by the state? That would be affected by the state too?
State.
Even though it's federal, well, I guess it's.
Federal under the state.
It goes through the state.
Yeah.
Talking about Mowings.
Mowings Road, yeah.
Right. Who's that, the new eye doctor? Any other potential new business leads?
Uh.
That you can talk about?
There's, we're trying to marry up a couple groups. I had gotten a call on some interest on 57. From one Realtor and then the people that are working for us also have some interest, so I'm trying to make. Right now, we're looking at different properties and who owns them and the size and shape of them. We're trying to make a marriage between those two groups to see if they can do something multiple and then we'll try to, we're going to try to talk to one other local business to see if we can do a three-store project over there.
Oh.
But that's, it's all speculative.
Let's start.
Yes.
It's a start.
It's great.
Yeah, we had a Realtor who called about the old grandma site or wherever that was there and.
Head house, okay.
And we got to, initially, because we don't have any sewer water over there, he was like, "Well, okay." And then I heard from these guys that there's some interest from somebody on the other side of that, the south side of the street.
Okay.
That on the north side of the street. I said, "Well, would you have any interest to come on the south side of the street marrying up a larger entity?" And he said, "Yes." So we're trying to, we're trying to make a marriage there and hopefully we'll have a meeting sometime within the next 60 days between the two entities.
Great.
We'll have all the, unfortunately, we don't have all the information we need in-house here. We have to go to Will County to get it. And that's what we're working on right now. And we'll see.
Well, these days we'll have to build a sewer line.
Well, yeah, if you get these, if you got those three projects to come together like that, I think you'd be happy to do that.
Right.
Based on what I know so far. I, yeah, I see that happening as part of an overall incentive type of deal. But that would be good too, because that would be a long-term. And that would push the growth out that way too. Which is 57's. We're still trying to interest to one party on the other side. But we'll see. Actually, we'll take the other side.
Yes.
In fact, we, we'll make it inform that downtown, we have to stop for us. Is that? Nothing. Oh, okay. Sorry.
A different subject, Kevin, you know, going through Frank for those flower arrangements you have hanging from your decorative poles or whatever. What do those things run a piece? And how do you, do you have somebody full-time just going around watering those things?
Seven days a week. They're, when we buy them, we get them all from Allison Nursery. They're 120 bucks a pot. So, but it's, it's a lot of maintenance.
Yeah. Watering is worth more than that. Watering is worth more than that.
Everybody wants to know what the secret is, how we get them so big, it's just miracle grow.
Yeah. But really, do you have like a high school kid, or some, or summer?
There's a full-timer and a summer hub.
Really?
To maintain, there's actually two full-timers and about four, anywhere from four to six summer hubs downtown all summer, so. It's seven days a week watering.
You guys got a tank?
Two.
Those permanently affixed in the papers? No, they're just there.
I just wanna mention, Bob and Garrett from Public Works were a huge help downtown on Saturday. We had some power issues that we were talking about before, and they were running around helping us get those solved, and so really appreciate both of them, being down there and helping out.
So anybody else in a program, like Bob was, not necessarily the trees, but.
Oh, any other Public Works people? Mike?
No.
Greg attended a conference last week.
Yeah, last week.
And Marcy's at the Treasurers Conference today and tomorrow.
Who's that? Champion.
Challenge champion, state conference.
Steve, are there any more downtown events planned this year?
Yeah, there is, I mean, there's gonna be Community Days, which, I don't know, I don't have the date, I gotta get the date, and then Fall Fest, and Christmas in the Village.
So the Fall Fest, is that gonna be the?
Fall Fest will be the Saturday, I think it's gonna be the Saturday before Halloween.
But it'll be the trunk or treat kind of thing?
It'll be, right, it'll be the same as last year, the vendors and everything, and then the last, whatever it was, couple hours, they may tweak the hours a little bit with the two.
Yeah.
The trunk or treat, a little bit of that. And then Christmas in the Village, I believe is the second Saturday.
Okay.
And the car show?
Car show's July the thirtieth.
Yeah.
Tractors for, for a Cure is July the sixteenth. They've got a pretty, they've got a pretty good sized event planned too. I know they were looking for volunteers, for help to serve food and so forth, I know they reached out to the Chamber. When they were in Beecher, the Beecher Chamber provided some help.
I am L.
Yeah, please.
Uh, I am L's coming up, if you would like me to register you, or make reservations for you, or whatever you'd like to do, let me know. Uh, July the eleventh is the official opening date for taking registration, and if you're gonna go, I would recommend that we get your reservation done to it all in town, so.
That's in September, correct?
The twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, if I remember correctly. So let me know, all I gotta do is just send me an email or drop a call and tell me, yeah, I wanna go, and what days? You may not wanna go Thursday, Friday, you know, Saturday, you may wanna go Friday, Saturday, or just one night, or no nights, and just wanna go to the conference, that's fine too. But let me know if you need me to, you guys do your parking, how do you do that? Well, there's South Park and there's Valet Park, and South Park's not much cheaper than Valet, actually, so.
So what's the date again?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Yeah, it's the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of September, yeah, whatever, the twenty-seventh.
Is Thursday a full day, or is that?
No, it's usually not.
That's just the.
It's a registration and a cocktail party and.
For you guys, maybe you don't know, it's the Illinois Municipal League Conference, it's in Chicago.
Oh, sure.
And there's a lot of good, a lot of good programs, a lot of good, just meet and greets and, you know, just kinda networking.
It is the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth.
I mean, I'd probably go the twenty-third, probably just for the day, but I'll let you know for sure.
Yeah, let me know for sure.
Yeah.
So I can get you registered, and for the conference anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, cause last year I just took the train up, that's in February, that works well.
Yeah, drops you off right there.
Is that, where, where's the venue, is it?
Chicago Hilton.
The Carmel Place or something, or?
No, Chicago Hilton in Tower. It's pretty well-attended, a lot of Downstaters go, a lot of towns go and spend the night, you know, that's their big guja for the weekend. And then they have different seminars and breakout sessions. We'll get a list of what the potential things are, usually by the end of August. They have the speakers, they just nail down, excuse me, and you select, I mean, each, each hour or each two-hour session has four different things going on, you kinda pick which ones. Uh, there is usually a pretty good session for newbies.
Okay.
Yeah, so, one of, one of them is usually pretty good. It helps you a lot to understand, do what you can and can't do.
It's interesting there too, to talk to a lot of mayors and board members from towns of comparable size, smaller size.
Sure.
Bigger, I mean, it's real open-friendly, you know, when you're eating, or having a drink, or whatever.
Yeah.
And people are a lot, find out what their problems are.
Sure.
It's good.
Yeah, if you've never done it, I would recommend. It's geared towards the political side. It is. And you can even go see Buckston lawyer there. And I'll tell you how wonderful they are.
Buckston?
That's the study group that they're.
Two years ago.
Okay.
Anything else? I forgot, a motion to adjourn the committee of the hall.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, here by trustee Martin.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marriage?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Eck?
Yes.